Hello everyone. Today we will be doing the report summary of the fifteenth Finance Commission Report for twenty twenty one twenty six. Let's begin. First of all, what do we know about the Finance Commission? Finance Commission as we have already read in the Polity section that it is a constitutional body. It is a constitutional body under which article that you must recall right now. I'll give you five seconds to recall. It's a constitutional body under article two eighty. Right? Yes. So Finance Commission is a constitutional body under article two eighty. And it is made by Department of Economic Affairs under Finance Ministry. So that's the prerequisite that I'm hoping you are aware of. If you're not, then you have to go back to your basics and revise Lakshmi Kant once more. So as it's written over here as well that Finance Commission is a constitutional body formed by the President of India to give suggestions on centre state financial relations. So what it does? It recommends on centre state financial relations. This is important for prelims also and important for mains as well. Moving on. The fifteenth Finance Commission Chair is Mister N K Singh was required to submit two reports. The first report consisting of recommendations for the financial year twenty one twenty, sorry, financial year twenty 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 one was tabled in the Parliament in February twenty twenty and the final report with the recommendations for the period twenty twenty one twenty six period was tabled in the Parliament on February first twenty twenty one. So there have been two reports for twenty 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 one and for the period and again the second report on February first twenty one. The key recommendations are. Let's go through it. Share of the states in the central taxes. The share of the states in the central taxes for twenty twenty one twenty six is recommended to be forty one percent same as that for twenty 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 one. This is less. So what we have to focus on with how it was different from the last times Finance Commission that was twenty fifteen to twenty twenty. Right? So actually it was twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Yeah, so this is less than the forty two percent share recommended by the fourteenth Finance Commission twenty twenty or twenty fifteen to twenty twenty period. So this time around it is forty one percent that we have to remember it is less than previous one. The adjustment of one percent is to provide for the newly formed union territories of Jammu Kashmir and Ladakh from the resources of the centre. So we got we got the reasoning also that why they reduced the share, the recommended share, why? Because one percent will be adjusted for the newly formed duty of Jammu Kashmir and Ladakh. Now criteria for devolution, this is important. So what are the criterias for devolution? Okay, table one shows, okay, this is the criteria. Income distance, area, population as per nineteen seventy one. As you must know, we fixed it at nineteen seventy one in two thousand two itself. That's the same population we use for our devolution of seats in legislative assemblies and also in the devolution of Financial Commission. Then population in two thousand eleven also. Then demographic performance, forest cover, forest ecology and tax and fiscal efforts. Okay, fourteenth Financial Commission used the term demographic change which was defined as population in twenty twenty one. The reports of twenty 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 one used the term tax effort, the definition of the criteria is the same. Okay. Okay, so fourteenth Finance Commission, fifteenth and fifteenth, okay, so we'll be going with this. Income distance forty five percent share, area fifteen percent same, population we go with twenty eleven. It's fifteen percent, it has increased, that's why the southern states were mad. If you recall, they always complain that their, which is kind of true that they don't get their share for reducing the population while central government incentivizes northern states for having more population. So that's what they complain is. Then demographic performance twelve point five percent, forest cover nil. Forest and ecology now there is ten percent, okay, they have increased from forest to forest and ecology. Then tax and fiscal efforts two point five percent, total is hundred. Income distance maximum forty five, area fifteen, so the bigger states they benefit more. Then population fifteen percent, again populous states they benefit more. Demographic performance twelve point five percent, forest and ecology ten and tax and fiscal efforts two point five. Now let's go through it quickly. It shows the criteria used by the Commission to determine each state's share in the central taxes and the weight assigned to each criteria. The criteria for the distribution of central taxes among states for twenty twenty one twenty six is same as that for twenty 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 one. However, the reference period for computing income distance and tax efforts are different. Reference period for computing income distance and tax efforts are different. Hence the individual share of states may still change, individual share of states in the taxes devolved in the period is provided, okay. This is an important table. You have to remember it, they might ask it in prelims and you can quote them in mains. Income distance, so income distance is the distance of the state's income from the state to the highest income. Okay, okay, income distance. Income distance of the state has computed as the average per capita GSTP during the three year period between twenty sixteen seventeen and eighteen nineteen. A state with lower per capita income will have a higher share. This is important. A state with lower per capita income will have higher share to maintain equity amongst states. Now demographic performance. The terms of reference of the Commission required it to use the population data of twenty eleven to make the recommendations accordingly, the Commission used twenty eleven population data for its recommendations. The demographic performance criteria has been used to reward made by states in controlling the population. States with lower fertility ratio will be scored high on this criteria. So we can see here that demographic performance is twelve point five percent while population is fifteen percent. So what are the incentivizing? Are the incentivizing population or are the incentivizing fertility rate reduction? Because it seems as if that they're incentivizing population because the share of population is more than the share of demographic performance which is still less than fifteen percent. So that's a very good point which can be used in mains while writing the answer. That the disproportionate distribution of taxes among different states in our country. Okay, then forest and ecology. This criteria has been arrived at by calculating the share of the dense forest of each state in the total dense forest of all states. Has been arrived at by calculating the share of the dense forest of each state in the total dense forest of all the states. Calculating the share of the dense forest in the, okay, okay. Then tax and fiscal efforts, this is fairly simple, they are just stating that this has been calculated thereby calculating the share of the dense forest of each state in the total dense forest of all states. So whatever share percentage you have of dense states, dense forest is the percentage share you will get extra. And tax and fiscal efforts, this criteria has been used to reward states with higher tax collection efficiency. It is measured as the ratio of the average per capita own tax revenue and the average per capita state GDP during three years, okay? Then grants. Grants over the twenty twenty one twenty six period, the following grants will be provided from the centre's resources. Revenue deficit grants, seventeen states will receive deficit grants worth two point nine lakh crore to eliminate revenue deficit. Sector specific grants. Of one point three lakh crore would be given to states for eight sectors and which are those sectors? They are health, school education, higher education, implementation of agricultural reforms, maintenance of PMGS by road, judiciary, statistics, aspirational restricted looks. A portion of these grants will be performance linked. Then state specific grants. The Commission recommended state specific grants of forty nine thousand five hundred ninety nine crore. These will be given in the areas of social need, administrative governance and infrastructure, water and sanitation, preservation of culture and historical monuments, high cost physical infrastructure and tourism. The Commission recommended a high level committee at state level. Recommended a high level committee at state level to review and monitor utilization of state specific and sector specific grants. Now grants to local bodies. The total grants to local bodies will be four point three six lakh crore, a portion of the grants to be performance linked including including two point four lakh crore for rural local bodies. One point two lakh crore for urban local bodies, rupees seventy thousand fifty one crore for health grants through local governments. The grants to local bodies will be made available to all three tiers of Panchayat village, block and district. The health grants will be provided for the health grants will be provided for conversion of conversion of rural subsectors and primary healthcare sectors to health and wellness centres, support for diagnostic infrastructure, for primary healthcare activities and support for urban healthcare and wellness centres, sub-centres, public healthcare centres and public health units at the block level. Then there will be grants to local bodies other than the health grants will be distributed among states based on population and area with ninety percent and ten percent weight dish respectively. The Commission has prescribed certain conditions for availing these grants except health grants. The entry level criteria include entry level criteria include publishing provisional and audited accounts in the public domain, fixation of minimum floor rates for property taxes by states and improvement in the collection of property taxes. No grants will be released to local bodies of a state after March twenty twenty four if the state does not constitute State Finance Commission and act upon its recommendations by then. So we'll just highlight it in pink because it's important. It's important for this year's mains. So no grants will be released to local bodies of a state after March twenty twenty four if the state does not constitute State Finance Commission and act upon its recommendations by then. Then disaster management, disaster risk management. The Commission recommended retaining existing cost sharing patterns between centre and states. Retained the existing cost sharing patterns for disaster management funds, the cost sharing pattern between the cost sharing pattern between centre and states is ninety ten for northeastern Himalayan states and seventy five twenty five for all other states. The state disaster management funds will have a corpus of one point six lakh crore, sender's share is rupees one point two lakh crore. Now this is completed. Now tax and fiscal efforts. Fiscal roadmap, fiscal deficit and debt levels. The Commission suggested that the centre bring down fiscal deficit to four percent of GDP by twenty twenty five twenty six for states. For states, it has recommended the fiscal deficit limit to be four percent in twenty twenty one twenty two, three point five percent in twenty twenty two twenty three and three percent during twenty three twenty six, that is this year onwards it has to be three percent for states and four percent for centre. If a state is unable to fully utilize the sanctioned borrowing limit as specified above during the first four years, it can avail the unutilized borrowing amount in subsequent years. Okay. Extra annual borrowing worth zero point five percent of GSTP will be allowed to states during the first four years upon undertaking power sector reforms. Now this is important. If they want extra credit from the government of zero point five percent of GSTP, so they'll have to undertake power sector reforms including reduction in operational losses, reduction in revenue gap, reduction in payment of cash subsidy by adopting direct benefit transfer and reduction in tariff subsidy as a percentage of revenue. The Commission observed that the recommended path for fiscal deficit for the centre and states will result in a reduction of liabilities that is the centre from sixty two point nine percent of GDP in twenty twenty two twenty one to fifty six point six percent in twenty twenty five twenty six. The states on aggregate from thirty three point one GDP to thirty two point five percent. It recommended forming a it recommended forming a high powered intergovernmental group to review the fiscal responsibility and budget management act to recommend a new FRBM framework for centre as well as states and oversee its implementation. Then revenue mobilization. Income and asset based taxation should be strengthened to reduce excessive dependence on income tax on salaried incomes. The coverage of provisions related to tax deduction and collection at source. The coverage of provisions related to tax deduction and collection at source should be expanded. Stamp duty and registration fees at the state level have large untapped potential. So what they are saying is stamp duty and registration fees at the state level have large untapped potential. Computerized property records. Then second one is that computerized property records should be integrated with the registration of transactions and the market value of property should be captured. State state government should streamline the methodology of property valuation. Then GST. The inverted duty structure between intermediate inputs and final outputs present in GST needs to be resolved. The revenue neutrality of GST rate should be restored. Revenue neutrality of GST rate should be restored which has been compromised by multiple rate structure and several downward adjustments. Rate structure should be rationalized. Rate structure should be rationalized by merging the rates of twelve percent and eighteen percent. States should need to step up field efforts for expanding the GST base and for ensuring compliance. Fiscal management practices. A comprehensive framework for public financial management should be developed and independent fiscal council should be established with powers to assess records from centre as well as states. The council will only have an advisory role, a time around plan for phased adoption of standard based accounting and financial reporting for both centre and state should be prepared while eventual while eventual adoption of accrual based accounting is being considered. The centre as well as state should not resort to off budget financing. Centre and state should not resort to off budget financing or any other non transparent means of financing for any expenditure. A standardized framework for reporting of contingent liability should be devised. Both centre and state should strive to improve the accuracy and consistency of macroeconomic and fiscal forecasting. States should aim amend their fiscal responsibility legislation to ensure consistency with the centre's legislation in particular with the definition of debt. States should have more avenues for short term borrowings other than the ways and needs advance and overdraft facility from the RBI. States may form an independent debt management cell to manage their borrowing programs efficiently. Other recommendations, health. States should increase spending on health to more than eight percent of the budget by twenty twenty two. Primary healthcare expenditure should be two thirds of the total health expenditure by twenty twenty two. Primary healthcare expenditure. Centrals sponsored schemes in health should be flexible enough to allow states to adopt and innovate. Focus on CSS in health should be shifted from inputs to open outcome. All India medical service, all India medical and health services should be established. This is aim. Wow. Funding of defence and internal security. A dedicated non lapsable fund. A dedicated non lapsable fund called the monetization fund for defence and internal security will be constituted to primarily bridge the gap between budgetary requirements and allocation for capital outlay in defence and internal security. The fund will have an estimated corpus of two point four lakh crore for the five years of this one point four lakh crore will be transferred from the consolidated fund of India. Rest of the amount will be generated from measures such as this investment of defences, public sector enterprises and monetization of defence lands. Centrally sponsored schemes. A threshold should be fixed for annual allocation to CSS below which the funding for a CSS should be stopped. To phase out CSS which outlived its utility or has insignificant outlay. Third party evaluation of all CSS should be completed within a stipulated time framework. Funding pattern should be fixed up from ten and transparent parrot and kept stable. So these are the stuff which we can, we know, so we can ignore them. Moving on. This is a lecture. So these are the list of all the states finances and grants given. And this is also, so we'll just look at them one by one. A lecture, this is the individual share of states in the taxes devolved by the centre. So let's see who are the biggest gainers and losers. Andhra Pradesh it lost. Okay, Arunachal Pradesh gained. Assam lost, okay. Bihar gained. Chhattisgarh gained. Goa gained. Gujarat gained. Haryana gained. Himachal Pradesh gained, Jammu Kashmir got dissolved, Jharkhand gained. Karnataka lost heavily. Oh my god. Karnataka lost heavily. And that's why they are complaining. Of course, it's the biggest loser so far. Kerala also lost, Madhya Pradesh gained, Maharashtra gained, Manipur gained, Meghalaya gained, Mizoram gained, Nagaland gained, Odisha kind of lost, okay. Punjab gained. Rajasthan gained. Sikkim gained, Tamil Nadu. Tamil Nadu gained, okay. You would expect Tamil Nadu to lose but it actually gained. So we are just pointing out the anomalies which you would not have expected. Telangana lost. Tripura gained. Uttar Pradesh lost, okay, this is another anomaly. Uttar Pradesh lost minuscule amount. Very little. But it did. Then Uttarakhand gained, West Bengal gained. Okay. So I think the biggest loser over here is Karnataka, they lost a whole one percent. Now let's see. Sector wise. Grants for twenty twenty one twenty six in crores. To revenue deficit grants, we have given, okay, revenue deficit is very high. The local government grants, okay, this is also high. Urban local bodies, rural is greater. Okay. Health grant, other grant. Then disaster management, okay. Sector specific my health. Maximum. First place is implementation of agricultural reforms. Second place would go to health after COVID, this is the first priority for us. Then maintenance of PMGS by roads. Then we have judiciary and higher education, school education, aspiration district blocks and statistics. State specific grants total. This is the ranking for this, let's rank this. The highest amount is been given to fourteen thousand one lakh twenty nine, four lakh thirty nine. So this is the highest. Then we have revenue deficit grant. Then sector specific. Disaster management is fourth and state specific is fifth. This is the ranking we did. Moving on, this is the state specific details of grants in crores. Now let's see who all got what. So the highest one was local government, let's see who got the highest in local government. This was the first highest. Highest was in rural. Okay, 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 twenty two, I'm seeing twenty two here, Maharashtra. Maharashtra is winning. We will just highlight it. It can be faster. Okay. So Maharashtra twenty two thousand. Just highlight the maximum ones. Then we have Bihar also. We have Gujarat. We have Karnataka on the big states, Madhya Pradesh, but maximum is then we have Rajasthan and Tamil Nadu. But if I have to say, I will say. Let's keep it. Let's keep it the highest one, Maharashtra is highest. Now let's move on, urban local bodies, highest, okay, it's again Maharashtra. Grants to local bodies. Maharashtra again. Then let's see, granting uh health grants, maximum. Again Maharashtra, okay, revenue deficit grant, zero. That's unique, right? Okay, but the maximum was given to. Kerala. Okay. Okay, 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 okay. Moving on. To disaster ma- health, let's see health, health maximum grants were given to. Maximum granted health were given to, I see six thousand over here. Oh I'm sorry, we just overlooked Uttar Pradesh. I think this is different. Okay. I think it's related to population, yeah, it was. So let's not see this. Okay. So this is done. Okay, I'll just, I'll just look at the highest ones. Let's see revenue deficit grants, there are some zeros as we can see, Bihar Chhattisgarh Goa did not take any revenue deficit grants, but some did. And the highest one was from Kerala. Now let's see, grants, health grants. Um the highest one was not from Uttar Pradesh. It is from Uttar Pradesh. Okay. Then next one, rural local bodies, thirty eight. Yes, it is from Uttar Pradesh, second is Maharashtra. But yeah. Urban local bodies. It is Uttar Pradesh. I think it is the highest one, but it not taken any revenue deficit grant. Then disaster management, highest was taken by Maharashtra. Okay, then health, health highest is taken by Uttar Pradesh. Then we have three thousand, yes, three thousand PMGS by roads. Arunachal, okay, that's such a small state, but they have taken that much from PMGS by roads. Pratanmantri Gati Shakti Hojna, then statistics may we have hundred fourteen as the highest. Then we have judiciary. Let's see judiciary, we have thousand. Uttar Pradesh. Then we have higher education, eight ninety three I can see, Uttar Pradesh again. Then agriculture, we have four thousand two hundred highest, nine thousand. Uttar Pradesh, there is Andhra Pradesh also, very close, state specific grants highest. Three thousand, oh six thousand, Karnataka, state specific grants Karnataka. So this is done, we are done with financial. We are done with finance commission report, I hope it helps you all. You have to revise it again and again, so you can watch the video two to three times, make notes from yourself for yourself. And yes, this concludes our session for today, thank you for being with me till the end. And thank you, and see you all the next time.